Education and Institutions K through 12. Buses and Transportation. Face Covering Requirements. Classroom Settings. Extracurricular Activities. Quarantines Guidelines. And his executive order. And what the Senate Bill Number Five states is that local health departments, public health emergencies, provides that a local order addresses an aspect of declared emergency addressed by the executive order. The local order may be less stringent than the executive order to extend permit permitted by the executive order. Provide that all local order addresses and an aspect of the declared emergency that is not addressed by the executive order or local addresses of the declared emergency. More stringently than the executive order. It all comes down to to the fact that unless this local order is approved by the county legislative body, which is in the case of the local health departments, an ordinance is adopted by the city of legislation body and approved by the mayor or city health officials. That subject the approval of the county legislative body. What they're saying is if we want to make anything stricter, it has to go through you. You have to make all the approvals. Correct?
That's right.
And I just want to let you know that the health department did not go beyond the executive orders ever. Which I feel like that's what it's come down to. Us against them or something, I don't know. But it never came to that point. We stayed within guidelines. Our health officer was in on all of our decisions with the schools. And he approved all the things that the schools wanted to do. But it also states with the new executive orders that changes include removing the mask mandate while the state facilities, except for anyone inside the state government, congregate, hospitals, state prisons, which were doing a COVID clinic, they have to wear the mask. Continuing a face covering requirement inside the Indiana schools through June 30th. A lot of parents did not want to have the mask at the commencement. That wasn't a health department decision. That was an executive order decision. The governor said, if you're going to be on school property, anybody has to wear a mask. And it also says local school boards will determine what measures or restrictions are needed in their local schools regarding the spread of COVID-19. The senior counsel for the school board, or the Indiana School Board Association, she says law is silent on the board policies, public health restrictions, so in the local legislative body does not have the authority to approve or disapprove the school's policy or procedures. But the school preparation does not follow the governor's executive orders and the local health department orders if approved by the legislative body. And the county, or their, the Delphi attorney states the same thing as well as the general counsel for the schools. Do you want to start? Do you want to discuss your? Is this all mud?
Well, that's a lot of defamation, but what was the date on that when they updated? November? I don't even remember when they updated that time.
Of the last executive order?
Well, the last is for current here.
The one I gave you just came out.
The one that was done in November?
Oh, it was the guidelines.
New guidelines?
The new guidelines on
That was in November?
Yeah. Oh, excuse me, it was September. Yeah, for them. So you could go, if you wore a mask and they were within so many feet, they could wear a face shield, not a mask, and they could do this, and they could go seven days instead of 10 days, but they had to wear the mask. It was just more than the schools wanted to adopt, so they decided to stay within the guidelines they were given at the beginning. By the state. Now we're working on our vaccine clinic and demobilizing. We don't know what the state's going to require of that. Hopefully it'll go into the health departments, or maybe maybe the white force go into physicians' offices. We don't know if that's going to be where it'll end up, but we're in the demobilization process, writing our ARs for trying to get out of this COVID the best we can. And try to be forward. Opening up the museum, so you guys can have meetings out there.
So are you, are you done with the shops?
Now, we're through June. We still have, some of the teachers and some of the students want, still want to get it, but they wanted to wait until after school was out to get vaccinated. We're still working with the state on our Pfizer, amount of Pfizer we get. We do have adults that want to come in and get Pfizer, but they've only been giving us 30, 60 doses at a time. And then you think, well, every student has to have two doses, so we're trying to save our Pfizer for our students 12 instead of 18, unless the state will opt and give us more Pfizer. So anybody 18 and older is getting a German, a German girl coming right now. And that's the same at the health clinic right now.
Okay, what about the boosters that we're hearing? So that's a problem.
We haven't, they keep saying that yes, we're going to get a booster. Nobody's put that in stone, so we really don't have I can't really give you that information because I don't have it. Nobody's said that that's exactly where they're leaning towards, but you know, the COVID is a virus, just like the flu. It mutates. Hey, you found out that I can't break this barrier, so I'm going to go around this way, and we're going to have to develop a new flu shot every year because the flu mutates too. So I mean, I foresee that there will probably be a booster. It may be just like the flu shot, who knows? I mean, we
Are you saying COVID is the flu?
No. I'm saying COVID mutates like the flu. Like you have one strain of flu, and now you're going to get another strain. Well, we have one strain of COVID right now, but now we've got some the variants are in Carroll County, so a new strain of COVID is
Vaccines are still exponential.
Right, and the state came up with the county metrics, blue, yellow, orange, red. And all of our guidelines were based on that. We were blue for a while. We're yellow. We're close to orange. We're headed back up, you know, towards red. I don't know. You know, it's it is what it is. I mean, people pretty much got the vaccine, the lump vaccine, as far as we're concerned.
Well, your root story is people received the vaccine.
Right, but we don't know if it's the new variant they're getting. They're getting the COVID.
Is there a way to test that?
They're working on that test as I, as we speak right now, but nobody knows if that's the new variant yet. There's a lot of Yeah, it's a new
Just like the mask, nobody knows.
It's a new test.
The doctor who had this whole thing up, he doesn't.
I didn't start it.
I know you did. You're doing your job. I understand that. Come down from the state, it's passed down the
And that's what I'm trying to tell everybody. The health department did not start this. We are given a job with you. It doesn't matter what my opinion is on masks or the vaccine. They don't care. They pay me to do a job, just like everybody else. So we don't we, when we heard the information, you were hearing the information.
So you pushed something along that you didn't believe it, but
I didn't say that. I just said, it doesn't matter what my opinion is. The state doesn't care what my opinion is. They pay me to do a job.
That's one thing I respect. We can't each other. Doesn't have our opinion.
Right, and you have yours, and I have mine, and you know, we work in health field. We've always had to wear a mask, you know, I I work on an airplane. Do I want to be a plastic police on the airplane? No, I don't. But I, but I want a job. The FAA says we're going to do this, you know. I mean, it is what it is. I, dude, I want my grandchildren to go to school and wear a mask every day? No, I don't want them to do that. It wasn't my decision.
You shouldn't have to.
It wasn't my decision. So
You're going with somebody to tell you your child has to wear a mask.
It wasn't my decision. The mask mandates can't
It's your parent or the parent.
What?
Your response is for the child.
Well, you do. I, they, they offered you to do e-learning at home. They did give you an option. The school's made everybody an option.
Or they can homeschool.
Everybody
Can I ask a question, you know? So we don't argue, is are they going to tell you about where the, when the clinic closes, where those shots will be? Will it be at a
We don't know.
We don't know.
Right now, we're working with Indiana State Board of Health on trying to either put it in the health departments or
Or to the
Yeah, completely at family health clinic or Dr. Dutter's office or physicians' offices.
But it's still being available?
Yeah, it'll always be available, and you can get it through drugstores, TBS, Walgreens, Meyer, Walmarts. They're still going to continue it. So we're just you know, given the numbers as we slowly come down.
I don't have a problem.
That's right.
People want to go suck in their body. It's experimental. That's up to them.
I understand.
I'd choose not to.
I understand that, and just like the airplane. You know, when you want a ticket, you check two little boxes. It says you're going to wear that mask.
Do you think passports, do you require passports for those who live in vaccinated?
Well, the TSA and FAA, I just talked to an FAA inspector two days ago, and he said, he thinks it will be a requirement. That's why we told everybody that comes to get a vaccine, you get your certificate on your phone. It's texted to you. Take a screenshot of it. Take a screenshot of your card. Because it may not come from the states. But if you want to travel abroad, that's a whole new animal over there. You may have to add your requirement to travel abroad or travel out of the states anywhere. So that's not a, you know, state requirement or a federal requirement here. It could be another county's requirement. So, right now, the new bill, if it goes through and is passed now, you will make all the decisions. So there's going to be times when schools are going to want decisions made immediately, like they were calling us. You might think about that when this bill goes through, because everything is changing moment to moment. And I don't know how that's going to go. I mean, I realize we adopted an ordinance as a sovereign constitutional county, and I don't know where this bill leads us for that. But I would like to I would like to thank everybody for my year I spent here doing this. It was, it was quite interesting. As of the first of May, I turned in my resignation to the County Board of Health. And I'm going to move on and up to a different position. Closer to home. I enjoyed working with county and people of Carroll County, but I'd like to move on in this, and so as of June 30th will be my last day. That's the end of the grant period. And the new grant period starts July 1st, along with your Senate Bill Number Five.
I'd like to say something. Valerie, thank you for keeping me in the R and D ways, up to date on what was going on.
Thank you.
You were a big help.
We tried. We tried our best, but you know, it was a pandemic. Nobody knew what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess.
Sorry.
Do you need a lighter? Is there anyone who wants to make a comment or talk?
Well, can I just have it put on the record exactly how many people?
Can you come to the microphone? I'd help you here.
Can I just have it put on the record how many people in the county actually have to test positive before we're red? Because given our very low population, we could go in the red if, I don't know, I don't know. Do you have an exact number? How many?
We have over 2,000 positives, but we also have a community, the German Baptists, the Amish, who will not test, so we have no idea how many positives went through there.
All I want was on the record was how many exact number of people in
I did tell you.
In our county would have to be tested positive and confirmed tested positive for us to go in the red.
So based on the matrix it's turned out by the state that you can see on the website?
Okay.
I don't know the number off the top of my head. I'm the emergency management director, but I'm just telling you that you can find that on the website.
We have a three point O. A point score or three point O or higher is how they describe it on the, on the order. So what is that percentage for us as Carroll County?
We don't make that.
I understand you don't, but if you're the person
Let me finish. I'm here to answer your question. Okay. The metrics comes from the state. They email us and tell us what metric we're in. We don't get those numbers from the state. They just say your county is now in yellow, your county is now in blue, your county is now in red.
Actually, when you go on the COVID
I can go on the website.
When you go on the dashboard, it says per 100,000 people.
Right, and we don't have 100,000 here.
I know, we don't, so there's, there's a percentage then though, right? It's math. So you can just do the math.
And it comes from the State Board of Health. It comes from our epidemiologists every Wednesday.
Yeah, and then I just had one other question. They said that the, the guidelines weren't more stringent, but in the actual executive order, children under eight are not supposed to wear, are not required to wear masks. And I have seen for myself in the school, the one time I was actually gained access to the school, that there was a child in the office, first grade child, so I would assume they're under eight, was told to put a mask on or leave the office. So they are requiring children. My daughter was in third grade. She was on the older end of third grade, which made her nine, but some of her classmates were eight, and they were all required to wear masks. So yes, it was stricter than, than what was in the executive order. And our only thing bringing this up is, is the executive order ends the end of June. It's been extended once. It's, it's being contested, which is fine. All we are concerned about now is not what happened last year. We've it's done. It's over. We can't change it. We can't redo it, but what we can do is we can give our kids their lives back. We can get our lives back, and once the executive order ends, we just want to make sure that our kids can be freaking kids and can live like kids and go to school like kids and not get yelled at for going in the wrong direction in a hallway. That's it. That's all we want.
I S S.
Yeah, that's all we want, and that's all we're asking.
The, what she's talking about, the requirements, came from the school board and the superintendent. It didn't come from the health department, just to be clear. We did not make that requirement.
We have emails that from the, yes, from the superintendent that say everything came from
I have an email that is needed July 1st, or June 1st this year. That says, because I asked to be able to put the COVID policies on the agenda at the school board meeting. Unlike you guys, we actually have to ask 14 days in advance to do that, to have something put on the agenda. And I just want them to talk about it before we're right in front of the school starting, right? So I asked for that, and he came back and he said, I'm seeking a response from our school board. I'm concerned that even though our governor says it is up to the local leadership, the Delphi schools is bound by any orders that come through the State Board of Health or the Carroll County Board of Health. And I have copies of that. So according to the superintendent, it is you.
Yes, I'm not the Board of Health.
The county Board of Health, state, is the county health department. That's what we're always told, is that it's the health department that makes the rules and they're just following it. That is what we're told. So if that's different, then we need to have a different We need to have that actually out there, because that is what we're always told as parents. Oh, the county told us to do this. This came from the county. Nonstop. That's what we're told. So everybody needs to get that figured out. That's all my stuff.
Ma'am, in, in his response, he said the State Board of Health or, or the County Board of Health. The county, and again, I'm the emergency management director. I'm not the Board of Health. Our county Board of Health never made anything stricter than what the State Board of Health did.
That's okay. Right.
I'm just not, that's the State Board of Health. It wasn't the county Board of Health that did it.
The only comment that I want to make, Lord, now is that my only concern with this, I thought you were, emergency management director about this, is that I am always concerned about any abridgement of constitutional rights of the individual. And there's no provision in the Constitution for COVID or any plague or anything like that. Your rights are your rights, and that's important. I voted for that county sovereignty thing was because I want to make sure that we do all we can to preserve the rights of the individual. I think there have been in some places, some pretty egregious violations of the rights of the individual. For example, the way that some churches have been closed. Actually turned almost into an armed camp as far as not allowing anybody to go to a church or be involved in it. And that's mostly been in California and states like that. So I just, I just want to make sure that, that we as long as it, I can have a voice, are in support of the Constitution of the United States and the individual rights that are guaranteed therein, and that I think are endowed by our Creator to us, so that's all it comes down to, ma'am. Lord, do you want to comment?
Well, we took an oath to this position, to uphold
Yep.
the United States Constitution, the United States Constitution. It includes individual rights. People have minds of their own. If you want to take a shot, you want to wear a mask. It's up to you. I don't think somebody will be telling me what to do. You tell me what I should do, I can make a choice. I'm going to do it. I appreciate that for literally that we have. I, I go downstairs, I see a board down there, a lot of names on it. A lot of people served this country. A lot of people lost their lives to protect those rights. This, but we need to do this, look for the best, the best of our ability. A lot of young guys didn't come back.
What was your last name?
A lot of those young guys who served in the service never came home. They destroyed families. They destroyed lives. Kids who did never do the first.
It's interesting how these things can go in different directions. You know, I, I I have two friends, a cousin and a friend who died in Vietnam. And that's not even going back to the world or to them. Beyond that, I would say that most of the people who served there were dramatically affected for the rest of their lives. Whether it was World War II, or Vietnam, or Iraq, or wherever. It is a there are people who have given in huge ways protect our rights. And we swore to hold those rights and hold the Constitution of the State of Indiana and the United States Constitution. And there that, that's unbounded that, and I'm going to do that. I'm not arguing with the local health department about a thing. I'm not arguing with emergency management about a thing. I'm just saying that as a county, we need to respect the rights of the individual and uphold the Constitution. And as long as we keep that as a focus, I don't think we're going to have much and, and I, I don't know how to evaluate at what point that you have to have people help apart and all those things. I don't know. I mean, we're, we're, we're still having trouble in this room being able to accommodate everybody who wants to come to the meeting or has interest in the meeting or has interest in part of the meeting because of the setting so far apart. Carroll County owns the chairs to fit in every spot out here. We have plenty of plenty of seating for everybody to come in here to our regular meetings, but we are still recognizing the problems of of COVID and that you can say we're, we're, we're following guidelines as we see them. I don't find that as a violation of, of our rights to have to sit in front of the booth. I think that's fine. It is troublesome to me when we have people who want to come to the meeting, an open public meeting, that has to be an open public meeting, and we try our best to meet all those requirements. Really do, and then we have COVID rules that come along and say, well, you can't meet them. You can't let people come in. I think it's wonderful that we have ways for people to find out about our meeting other than having to be here. I, I appreciate very much the press being here and and that there are ways to find out about it, but I'd like for people to be here themselves too and have those seats. And advise us on what we're doing. You've seen a lot of things here today that I have trouble having enough knowledge or wisdom or just plain brainwaves to be able to understand what's going on with all these things. So your input, the input of our professionals that we have here invaluable to us. But it all comes still down to the fact that we made an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, and we did that. So I think we beat this dog around long enough. We're going to go over the next item here. What I did with it. Okay, here we are, Keith.
Hello, gentlemen.
And thank you to everybody who addressed this here, considering that.
First thing I would like to touch base with the gentleman coming from the last commission meeting is the estimate on the fencing.
Estimate on what?
On the fencings needed requirement for, to finish off in the basement. I've, I've total fencing was a company that got back with me, and is also the one that had completed all the work that had been down there before. And
Or do you think it should not be? Uh? Security in the basement.
You want to tell me too? I will.
No, I think I think this is a bit public. Go ahead, Keith. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Total estimate is $1,677.2. Basically, this is the back entrance into, lead you down into the EMA Director's Office and the other hallway for the basement. Can you just move that down just a little bit? So this is a concrete, up here in the white, it's a concrete pillar that runs from the brick chimney all the way over to the wall, which would make it a nine-foot fencing that would barricade anybody's ability to have access into any of that down there. So if I jump over the railing or anything like that to get into the basement. With that, I'm going to see the next picture, go to kind of different views of that location. Is that good enough? So basically, it'd be one solid fencing, two squares, galvanized fencing that will go from wall to wall. And although there is a chimney, it would have mechanical fence in place for, with a locking gate, key locking gate, which was something that, when we talked about the elevator, that way the keys can match. With department heads and everybody else that may require access into the basement, that's limits the number of keys that would have to be issued, as long as they're going to keep the same. So their, their estimate for cost and leave is $1,677.1.
We have that, we have that. Sorry, I've got something.
Oh.
You said $1,677.02.
Oh, two, sorry. Oh, two.
So to close off So to close off the rear entrance into this basement, it's going to cost us sixteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars?
Yes, two cents.
Interesting, people here, why are we have concern about the rear entrance to the basement, it's because there are lunatics out there, that's my opinion. Who could come in and get into the basement and cause problems. Plant a bomb. Destroy records. Start a fire. Violate people's privacy down there by things that are in records. And we don't really have right now a real good way of control who goes in and out of that. Few years ago, there wasn't any fencing down there, it was just piles of stuff everywhere. And we've come a long ways on that now, and this would probably be. We, we talked about limiting the access to the basement by, well, this would be part of that, other by the way the elevator would.
Which that will be.
Will we need to do that if we have this in place?
Yes.
Still will?
Yes, absolutely. It would require all the utilities to have the locking mechanism in place.
Okay, either one of you, tell me why we have to spend money on the elevator for all the expense, please.
If you don't do the elevator, then you're still going to have unrestricted access to the basement.
Still going to have what?
Unrestricted access to the basement.
Just back.
It would be.
Have access to your office down there.
It would have access to everything, I mean, that whole, whole entire hallway, all the way back to the training room, EMA office, unlimited access in the elevator. Which was, um, one conservative to have key lock, or the ID swap, which we went with key lock, it's been more sense, so that way the matching key would work on one gate plus the elevator as well, to give access into the basement.
How much did they say they thought it'd be to make the elevator go, to be restricted?
Um, it was in the total cost of the, of the second stage of the elevator upgrade, yeah.
I was thinking thirty-five, so they're going.
Yeah, it's two, yeah. But as soon as they go, yeah, because right now, anybody can go down to the basement.
Total the grade on this, I'm just trying to figure out how we can do it cheap. If we were to put a gated access at the end by the elevator, they could still have access to your office, right?
Correct.
You've got a lock.
Would need more than that, tell me. If all you do is step out of the elevator and it can't go anywhere, we need to restrict that.
It would require another gate for that to restrict on that side of the gate, access into my office also gives access into all the electrical connections, and breaker boxes, and boilers, and AC, and chiller, like, there's more damage. Yeah, we'll just leave it, yeah, it would, limiting access in the elevator, instead of just putting up a gate, is more suffice in what we're trying to do.
Change fences started kind of, we chained off the phones, I've been here too long to know, but we've had people just go down there that were supposed to be down there and go. Cut them, uh, pull them, cut them. We couldn't figure out why our fax machines weren't working, why our, you know, so I mean, even if they can get down there, they're going to do damage. Like you said, we have lunatics there.
Okay, so we're pretty well in agreement that fencing at all won't go down, won't work, we've got a good deal.
Correct.
Okay.
I think this is pretty, it's on the cost down, I guess the total is the locks, or what you wanted.
Yeah, with cost of materials, and I think the reason why his cost is so low on this is because he already has the materials, um, in his warehouse, um, because he's kind of questioning with the lock that I was requesting from him. Um, if he could be able to do it, that's how, and with him coming back with an estimate, means that he had the old warehouse's materials that he would need.
What this fence would accomplish is, okay, the elevator won't go to the bottom, but you could go around and go down the stairway and go down.
You go down the stairway, you're going to run right into a gate, you will not be able to access any further into the basement.
So do we have money in the budget for this?
For the building and structure, um, I have to double check on, on my bottom lines and see what, I know if this is going to come out of capital improvement, but it's something that was already established and going through, I don't know what was taken out of.
Just with the courthouse maintenance.
It's really important, I would have the funds to cover it for the sixteen seventy-seven, oh two. Yes, I will.
Is that good, in the motion on this, or?
Yes, maybe. To provide the material and labor for security fencing, basically.
Think I do.
I'll second that, all for a vote, all favors that, I, I.
With the boiler estimate upgrades and improvements in what's needed, uh, I'm inviting, um, James Chabon, A and H Chabon, um, come in and kind of give more detailed, uh. Information, and over his, and talk about his estimate, anyone?
Morning.
Morning, how are you?
Pretty good.
I probably don't need the microphone.
Yeah, probably not.
Ask your questions, I'll answer the best I can.
Well, I know you guys spend quite a bit of time down there, I think you're right, and more to, to, to look at the, the problems that you're trying to correct, so.
Correct.
What do we got here, what do we have here, excuse me, a total of a hundred and one thousand dollars, a hundred and two thousand dollars?
More or less, it's there. I got to take it completely apart, I got to jack up the concrete, I got to pour a new pad, I got to put a good base below it. Get that built up, we're going to relocate the boilers, right now they're sitting side by side. Kind of like that, we can't rot it, you can't clean it, you can't paint it, so, so what we're going to do, by changing the pad, just changing the way they face, and you guys know how the boilers look, see, what I call the fronts where the burners are. So one's going to face to the east, one's going to face to the west, we can get in there, rot them, clean them out, do the maintenance that needs to be done to them properly. And over the years that I've been here, I've constantly been making upgrades and changes, and, you know, I mean, I told you, when they were installed, they were never fired properly. Uh, they ran for ten years on low gas pressure, so then I fixed that, and the gas pipe started leaking because they didn't use pipe, you know, back in the day. So I had to tear all that apart and fix that, so it's just been ongoing, so I'm hoping with all this, and we'll get rid of the ductile steel, it'll go into his office. We're going to replace the pipe from a valve inside his office all the way back to the boilers. Boilers are technically supposed to have two six inch pipes coming up, going into one, you only have one, I think that's another reason your boilers keep cracking. You're underfired for ten years, the teeth and metal, then I get a fire in right, cracks it, they never got cleaned properly, I mean, I did the best I could, but they don't get cleaned properly. So you've got buildup calcium minerals, even though you put chemicals in, now that material's sitting down there, you're firing right, you're popping sections. Uh, we couldn't even get the one fixed before the other one broke this winter, so.
At the end of the season, we were down to half of the one that was working, working.
So you had four of the heat requirements fulfilled.
Correct.
Correct. You're a little overkill on the boilers at that point, that's your two point, over two million BTUs of heat.
Each?
One point three million per boiler. But each boiler has two gas trains, and each gas train has two stages, so e- each boiler's technically four, four st, you know, four boilers. Because you have low fire, low fire, high fire, high fire, and you've got two boilers to do that, you have really nice boilers, they just weren't installed right, and I'm hoping to fix that. Oh, I can get parts for them, oh yeah, they got, they got a lot on them.
Okay, so we.
Don't hear that often.
To do this, we'll have to go to the council. So we could approve this and just send it on pending council approval, that's true.
Whatever you guys want to do.
You'll have to go in and explain it to them, because I don't know if any of them have been down there, like. You took individually each one of us down there and, and explained the problem, sorted it out, had it parked for us. Did a very good job of letting us know what the problem is, and why that, why that it has always malfunctioned, and, but you're going to have to do some education for the folks on the council, too.
Keith likes taking pictures, so.
Yeah.
I've got a lot to watch for.
Correct, at the end, when, um, before the end of the season, the boiler finally turned off, we were, at some times, we were using up to seventy-five gallons per hour of water coming through there, because just keeping the boiler going. Luckily, you know, which is kind of a double edged sword in a way, being able to turn off the boiler tonight, and come in early in the morning, turn on, make sure the courthouse, just the limited amount, how much water consistently was used overnight, that was just a ways, just to keep the boiler going. In turn, it wasn't cold enough to where luckily it froze pipelines or anything else like that, so we was able to do that, save some on it, but it was, it was a lot of water that we were using. Just from where the, the boiler's, it's cracked on the pad, it's, um, flexing not right, and it's not centered right now.
Can you all read my brief, one might be disquoted, too.
That was two weeks ago, it was a loser.
But, uh, like copper, copper bids are good for a day. That's it, I give you that, so if you want copper, they're telling by the end of the day, and go under that price, they're not, I mean, it's, it's crazy right now. Uh, same with the steel, fighting fittings, and, yeah, you're going to be using steel pipe.
It's just an estimate.
Yeah.
One thousand nine hundred dollars. I want to take a.
Hold on.
Okay, so, we can't. We can't look at this as a bid, this is an estimate, and so, uh. When we pass this on to the council, if, if you're, uh. You're going to have to give them some parameters, too, and let them know that, that this is, that it may, may run higher than this.
I might think the suggestion that you do the same thing you did with the commissioners, invite them down there and show them one on one, or you can have two, three, two at a time, and let them look at what's going on, right, Paul?
Yes.
Paul might go down there today and learn from Paul.
Oh, yeah.
And they, they can go down there three.
Right, but I just, in case somebody else shows up, you just don't want to get in trouble with the, the thing you think.
It would, and it'll make it on.
Because I'm watching every door at the courthouse.
This estimate coming from Chabon is also in conjunction with, um, the other company, Eggers, yeah, Eggers, um, that come in, um, Shambo and Sons, um, that came in, um, for, so you can get advisement if exactly, if what he's doing, and what he sees is exactly, you know, true to what needs to be done, and Vinny that came in, um. He backed him up on absolute everything, and probably a little bit more than, more on that for repairs and stuff, um, so this is a combined, um, thought process for this estimate between Shambo and Sons and A and H Chabon as well.
I don't know everything, I know I don't know everything, but I know people do.